There you go, okay.
Okay?
Come in.
Evening, everyone. Welcome to the concurrent meeting of the School Administrative Unit Number Twelve School Board and the Londonderry School District School Board. I would like to call this meeting to order, and I would like to ask Mrs. Swenson if she would lead us in the place.
I'm the leading school vice on United States America. We do not have a religious stance on our nation, on God, and the people who live here and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I would like to take this opportunity, and I am really eager here as chairperson, to welcome Nancy Henderson's congratulations on her election. And John, congratulations on your reelection for the board.
Thank you.
First in our business is to elect the chairperson. Let me review with everyone what the procedure is. I will open the floor for a nomination of the chairperson. I will accept the nomination and ask for a second. I will then call for discussion, and then I will call for a vote. If the nomination fails to achieve a required majority, I will open the floor again for a nomination and repeat the process. Okay? Our attorney has advised we should handle one nomination at a time. During the discussion phase, a board member is free to speak for or against the nomination and indicate if the nomination fails, they will nominate another specific individual. Once a chairperson is elected, the chairperson will take over the meeting and conduct the election for vice chairperson in the same manner. Okay? Do I have a nomination for chairperson?
Mr. Temporary Chairman. He does enjoy this time.
Yes, I do.
I'd like to nominate John Robinson for chairman.
Well, second.
Second by Mr. Campo. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. The ayes carry it, unanimous vote. Congratulations, John Robinson.
Is everybody clapping because Nate's not in charge?
Yes.
Mary, if we could, that vote should be recorded as four zero one. Well, thank you. Is there a nomination for vice chair?
Chairman, I'd like to nominate John Ferrier for vice chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the nomination, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All not voting.
Aye. Thank you. Congratulations. Readoption of current policies and regulations, well, actually appointments. Attendance Officer, I saw a memo about this, is a truance officer now?
Yes. The administration is recommending Shannon Coyle, our SRO officer, as the attendance officer.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for Sharon, what's that?
Coyle.
Coyle, for attendance officer and Mary Wimsor for the school board secretary.
Is there a second?
Second.
The nominations are Sharon Coyle for attendance officer and Mary to continue as school board secretary, assuming you're rolling.
Discussion?
Is there a discussion?
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to thank the Londonderry Police Department for providing Shannon to us. She has, I've seen her working at the games, I listened to her on the radio working with the school system, and it's very comforting to have her working with the students. She has a very good bedside manner with the students, and I think that it's very helpful having her there. So having her as the truancy officer, attendance officer is excellent. And if I could add, I think it's important to state that Mary Sors' minutes are absolutely impeccable, and it's just amazing the accuracy that they get done at, based on the meetings that we sometimes have. So, and I just appreciate Mary's service to the community on the board.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of the two nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Mary, thank you for your continued service. Shannon, welcome aboard. Sharon, welcome aboard. Readoption of current policies and procedures. The first one noted here is CI, temporarily administrative arrangements. Nate, you want to explain that?
Yes. In case people are absent from outside duties, we have listed the chain of command at each of the schools. So, example, if the district, it would be Andy and Peter, and then in their absence, Mr. Zakilin. And then at the high school, there is the, basically, the chain of command based on who is absent.
Is there any discussion on these nominations?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Ron. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes five to nothing. The second policy is readoption of the investment policy. Nate, is there any background on this?
This is just something that is new in the statute, that the board has to readopt its investment policy every year.
Okay.
This is a policy that was adopted last May.
No significant changes from last year?
Nothing.
Chairman, I move investment policy DFA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Ron, second by John. All those in favor of readopting the investment policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Policy passes five zero. Are there other policies that we need to readopt, or do the prior year's policies continue in force?
Mr. Chair, you can make a general motion to adopt all, readopt all existing policies if you would like.
What would the board's pleasure be?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Readopt all existing policies.
Motion by Ron, second by John. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
All opposed? That's also four, five, nothing. Okay, questions and announcements? Anything from the multitude gathered here this evening? Seeing none, any from the board?
Mr. Chairman, on Election Day this past week, one big disappointment to me was that in the infinitum of the NHIAA, they decided to schedule basketball tournaments on Election Day. A shame on the state for springing up Election Day on so fast that they've never had a conflict before. And in the part of argument you most about this, and I'm going to use the word arrogance of the director, Pat Corbin, that when he realized the gym was there, we had children, young adults, that played the whole season for home court advantage, that lost it because he was too arrogant to realize that he made a mistake in his executive council, he's made a mistake. I know Nate had done a lot of work trying to get there, and I'd like to see two things happen. One, see if we have a resolution that, you know, at the school board meeting, that, you know, at the School Board Association, that, you know, that we shouldn't have this happen on Election Day. It's not like it's been changed in the last hundred and fifty or two hundred years. And the second one is, I'm not sure, Nate, if there's some sort of resolution that your group can make.
Yes, I've already spoken to the superintendent representative, Zon, the executive board of NHIAA, as well as the head of the basketball, and I've asked them to raise the issue at the executive board meeting, to change it to allow, if in fact there is a conflict, rescheduling of the game, so.
Up until this year, if my memory serves me correct, these games have been held on Wednesday for the first game of the tournament.
That's correct.
So this is the first year that they decided, for some reason, to move it to Election Tuesday.
Right, absolutely.
And the other part about this is that what I would like to see is, I'd like to see that budget. Since we pay dues into that, that's, it's a public budget, so I would like to see it. I've asked for this several times. I would like to see how much we are paying into it and what the salaries are of people like that.
Floor is open for discussion, by which I mean, don't wait to be recognized. If you have something to say, go ahead and say it.
I'll make sure that the School Board Association knows about our wishes on this item.
One other issue that Nate is aware of, not really an issue, but a concern that I've had in the past with NHIAA, is their restrictions on who's allowed to broadcast tournament games. For example, we, WLLL at one point wanted to cover a game that was being played at Southern New Hampshire University, and they were not able to because rights had been assigned to some host broadcaster or something. I find it disappointing that they shut out students from covering games, tournament games involving their own schools. So, I'm with you on this. I think that there are some questions that are worth raising there. Okay, anything else on this subject? Okay.
I just, I'm going to congratulate, and Rebecca may mention this, but I'm going to graduate our, congratulate our athletic teams in recent championship rounds. All our boys and girls did a great job.
All right, any further announcements, questions, anything from anybody? All right, can I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to the consent agenda with a change to the one set of minutes for the deliberative sessions, as amended.
Okay. Now, one thing that's mentioned in the cassette, cassette agenda, cassette agenda, dating myself, are school board meetings scheduled for April 4th and April 19th, both at 7:00 PM, both regular meetings, both to be held in the town offices across the hall. Nate, can we also, in the same spirit as the election, can we get a date set as soon as possible for the deliberative session?
Yes, we generally do that in the spring. We'll double check with our attorney, as we always do, to make sure that we've got the right timeline. Once we get that, we'll provide that to the school board with a recommended calendar for the remainder of the year.
Okay. All right, let's see. There are a couple of retirements on the cassette.
I'd be saying reel to reel, so I don't know if it's that bad.
On the final desk agenda here.
Start talking about three and a third, and you're in real trouble.
Or it could be the track agenda. Anyway, Nancy, welcome, and you have one of those.
I do.
Retirements.
I do. Diane Hoppy is retiring this year. Diane Hoppy has served in numerous positions in the district dating back to 1983. She worked at LEAP for several years until she was officially hired in her nineteen, when she was officially hired in 1991 for a permanent classroom position. Through the last twenty years, her classroom has been a wonderful place where children have been challenged and have thrived in a positive environment, where each student is valued for their contributions to the classroom community. In addition to her classroom work, Diane has been active on many committees throughout her tenure at school. She is famous as she is for bursting into songs.
Thank you.
We will sorely miss her fun-loving attitude, dedication, and hard work. She was my son's favorite.
Thank you. John?
Roxanne Keel will also be retiring in June. Roxanne's smile is a mile wider than is accentuated by the caring and respect she shows for each of her students. Ms. Keel started her career at Matthew Thornton as a substitute music teacher in 1989, and then moved to a grade-three classroom, which she excelled over the last twenty-plus years, with her third-grade colleagues, including Mr. Hope. Roxanne built strong instructional units that integrated learning into themes. The children's interest soared as each one learned at their own pace with motivating and engaging materials. As we have moved to our new curriculum materials, Roxanne has continued to teach third grade with energy and enthusiasm. We'll certainly miss her.
Always starting to see valued employees and teachers go. We have a motion on the consent agenda. I got it right that time. All those in favor of adoption, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's five to nothing. Moving on to deliberations. School board meeting schedules through June. Nate?
Yes, what we have put before you is a suggested board meeting calendar, April 5 and 19, May 10 and 24, and June 7 and 21.
Are those dates compatible with everybody? All right, do we move to adopt these, or just kind of show up? All right, can I have a motion on this then?
So move to adopt the board meeting days for April, May, and June.
Is there a second? Okay, motion by Ron, second by John, he got there first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's five, nothing. To adopt.
John?
Yes.
Just on that point, Nate, the, right now, before the storm that's going to hit next week, what's the last day of school this year?
You had to ask. Twenty, twenty.
Okay, so it's June, it's Mondays, June, the twentieth.
If we don't think there will be.
However, the students could be required to stay in school as late as the last day of June.
Right, correct.
Well, if there were power outage or.
Yes.
Electrical problems.
Earthquake.
Yeah.
All right, let's see. Oh, yeah, the snow is still over.
With all the snow now.
John?
Yes.
On the April 5 meeting, I had been working with Nate about having the representatives come in to talk to him, and I think that would still be a good idea to have them in here with the retirements, constitutional amendments, and several other things that are on their agenda.
Okay. Nate, is that going to be doable to your knowledge?
Yes, we'll send out invitations. We had sent out letters to our reps and legislators about a week, week and a half ago, indicating that the boards would like to meet with them to discuss upcoming legislation, so we'll give them the day.
All right, good, great.
Just to that point, I got a phone call this morning. This is a legacy from my NH Cafe days and school funding. I got a call this morning from the Derry School Board, because they got worried about CACR-12, the constitutional amendment, which was initially done by our representative.
Karen?
No, 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 no.
Sure?
Thank you, Sherman Packer. Sherman Packer sponsored it, and in that constitutional amendment 12, his wording included that the school districts would have a, in his layman words, a guarantee that we would get a certain amount of funding. That was brought to, was going to be brought to an amendment today by the leadership at the State House, and they were going to take out that wording. So the constitutional amendment was simply going to eliminate the responsibility for funding. That's expected to go to a vote tomorrow at 11 o'clock, so if people would like to guide their representatives to how they vote on that, although they probably pretty much decided at this point, they should be voting in the best interest of the Londonderry community in voting no on CACR-12. And if it passes there, then it would go on to the Senate. It does need a supermajority, two-thirds majority in the House, once they get to vote on that actual amendment, and if they are not there, the vote counts as a no. So they have to be in the room in order to make it happen. We understand that there's quite a bit of pressure going on to make sure everybody is in the room. And as Nate mentioned, there's also a constitutional amendment number seven that they brought up, so there'll be a number of these that will happen. Today, I do not know the vote on the amendment today, but the amendment only needs 50 percent, so it was likely, Sherman Packer indicated to me, it was likely that they would get that, because they only needed 50 percent of the people to get that amendment and to eliminate the guarantee of funding, so.
Now, that would be something that would take effect after potential passage in 2012.
Yeah, it would have to, it actually has to go, two-thirds in the House and the Senate. The governor then has to pass it, and the governor's indicated that he would pass constitutional amendment on education to eliminate the requirement for funding. And then that would be presented to the voters. It must be presented in a presidential election, so it would be at the next presidential election that was, was to be held. But it needs a supermajority, needs 66 percent of the state to agree with that constitutional amendment. Sherman Packer's hope is that the amendment becomes so unpalatable that the citizens of the state will, will not vote for it. So I've been talking with him to see if we can sneak anything more into it that makes it even worse than it already is.
You mentioned subsequent amendments. Is there any particular concern?
They're not done making sausage yet, so let's see where it goes.
Nate, anything more on the biannual ed funding question?
Just reiteration of the last update, there are two bills, one on the House side, one on the Senate side, that have made adjustments to the adequacy formula. There is in both of the bills, for lack of a better term, a hold harmless provision, which allegedly would provide districts with no more or no less than what they received this current fiscal year. One of the bills, either as part of it or in companion legislation, has an opportunity for a school board to request a special school district meeting without having to go to court. The other bill, the sponsor says it's in there, but it isn't really in there. You'd still have to go to court and go through the whole rigmarole of that to request a special school district meeting. As the board is well aware, not only is adequacy funding an issue, but also funding as far as building aid and catastrophic aid is concerned. Under the governor's proposal, Londonderry would get about $681,000 less in cat aid and building aid than we received this year, as the board is also aware. Under the present funding mechanism, we'd be about 1.6, we'd get about 1.6 million less in adequacy funding. So, and then on the top of everything else is the proposal to remove the state's obligation to fund 35 percent of New Hampshire retirement, and that's on the appropriation side, which is very problematic for us, because as the board is aware, the money basically goes from the treasury to the retirement system, doesn't show up as revenue, so what we budget for is 65 percent. And then just a little history for those people that are listening, when the retirement system was first put into place and was made mandatory, the state said they would pick up 35 percent of the employer's cost as a way of reinforcing the idea that it was going to be mandatory for fire police and school personnel. Several years ago, unilaterally, the state went from 35 percent to 30 percent after everybody set their budgets, and the board was aware that what that did was give us roughly a $200,000 issue on the appropriation side. At the same time, they said the next year they would be going to 25 percent, which gave us an opportunity to build that money into the budget. But along with that drop, they also said that for fiscal year 12, which is next fiscal year, they would go back to 35 percent. Okay? So the governor's proposal went from 35 to zero. So that impacts the appropriation side of our budget by $1,382,000. Absent any action on adequacy or other issues which would allow us to have a special school district meeting if no money is put back in retirement, to increase the appropriation side, the only way we could meet our legal obligation in paying retirement is by reducing expenditures within our budget to the tune of $1,382,000. That's where we are at this point in time. So, what we have are multiple bills, multiple financial targets, multiple issues on the appropriation side, multiple issues on the revenue side, and I guess the best way I can describe it is, we are now looking at a puzzle that we, a whole bunch of puzzle pieces. We have no idea what the puzzle looks like, and people keep on changing the size and the shape of the puzzle pieces. And we're not going to know until probably the end of June sometime, when the state finishes their budget deliberations. That's where we are at present.
Is there a rumor as exciting as that?
Um, let me, no.
It's still open. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason I raise my hand is this really reminds me of House Bill 616 and the school funding fight, and in that case, since the governor decided not to sign the bill, it even went into July, it went, I think, 10 days into July, because he let it become law without signing it, and the legislature finished it up on the last day of June. And that really slowed things down, and I don't think we got funding notification until the end of August that year, and some schools didn't get it till September, and that was an annihilation of how much they were going to get in funds, and that was on stuff that we voted on in March, so.
Just jump in, anybody.
Thank you.
Just, just, just to remind the public, we're not talking about 35 percent here. There's also, I think, an 11 and a half percent increase this year in the rates. So if you take all this and mash it up, the number I saw is it's a 73 percent increase to the towns and the cities in the retirement fund. The state has taken this fund over the years and not managed it well, to start with. Then last year, in their infinite wisdom with no money in the pot, they assured that the medical benefits, that was a supplemental benefit, was put back on the taxpayers, that that becomes now for anyone that has the benefit, it'll go on until they don't need that benefit anymore. And that was put into the system also to raise the cost of this item. So without any money, they increased the benefits on it, the fund is running in a significant deficit, and our fee in any other towns is approximately 73 percent increase over what the fees were last year.
Nate, are you anticipating that this is going to have an adverse effect on issuing contracts?
Oh, yes, absolutely. We, we're holding what would be the equivalent of 18.6 positions, some of which are teachers, administrators, there's non-affiliated people. We've also, to soften the impact on some people, we've done a reduction in time as opposed to eliminating the decision. So, to give you an example, with some of our nursing staff, the net is a drop of one nursing position, a hole of one nursing position, but it's 20 percent for somebody here, 40 percent for somebody here. Here's why we must do that. For certified personnel, if we have an April 1 deadline for issuing contracts, once you issue a contract, then you are legally obligated to pay for that contract. Since we, at this point, are in a quandary, let me put it that way, as to what is going to happen with the retirement, and since that represents 1.4 million dollars on the appropriation side, we can't increase our appropriation. So unless we hold those contracts, if we issue them, then we are obligated to pay them, no matter how much money is on the appropriation side. And since without a special school district meeting, you can't increase your appropriation, and now we're looking at a $1,382,000 hole we have to fill, we have to hold somewhere, we're holding somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.2 million dollars' worth of contract, contracts, so that we can provide the flexibility necessary to adjust depending on what occurs with the state budget. So, that's the box not only we're in, but every school, almost every school district in the state, with the exception of some of the city school districts or what have you. So, that was necessary to provide some flexibility, because. So that was necessary to provide some flexibility because if we issued all the contracts that we had intended to with the board's, with the budget that was passed, I really don't have 1.4, or we don't have 1.4 million dollars' worth of reductions anyplace else. So that's where we are at this point. So we have already met with all the people who are affected to let them know their contracts are on hold until such time as we have a resolution to the budget issue. Now, here's the other thing that everybody has to keep in mind. If we assume the state follows with its normal timeline, which would be the end of June, all right? Once we have an understanding of what is or is not in that budget and whether we have the ability to have a special school district meeting, once we go through the process of the board saying, yes, we're going to have a special, let's say there's enabling legislation, yes, we're going to have a special school district meeting, then between postings, hearing, deliberative session, and election, you're really sometime into August before that could be finalized and that could. The, you know, the problem for us, and it's the same for all the school districts really who have gone through deliberative session or school district meeting, is everybody's in the same boat. Every school district and every town was impacted by the retirement, and every city too, the proposal. So people are being very prudent, and we have to be very prudent too regarding holding on to those contracts for the time being. There really is no other choice.
Look at it from the other perspective. It means that we've got a bunch of people who are going to be going into August not knowing what their job's going to be at the end of August.
That's pretty much the case.
Well, I think that's my concern. You know, I mean, not that this whole thing is not concerning and troubling, but, you know, I guess if I were a teacher, wondering whether or not I was going to get a contract, if I lived in this immediate area and there were other opportunities, perhaps south of the border.
In a normal situation, I would say that that's probably accurate, considering everybody is in the same boat. Everybody's pretty much doing the same thing, so.
So you're not anticipating a mass exit?
No. There may be some positions that open up, maybe in special education or something else that might attract somebody. But right now, basically, everybody in the area is in the same position. All the superintendents I know are holding on to additional contracts because of the same situation they have that we have. And my concern, obviously, and I think, I know it's the board's concern as well as the administration's, is that it is stressful for those individuals involved. And we're trying to be, and I think we have been, very empathetic and work with faculty on these issues. But it's one of those things where we just do not have a choice. I wish we had another option, but there is no other option available to us.
Thank you, Nate.
So Nate, you've been, what's the pulse right now? You've been within the community, you know, of your staff. What's the pulse, you know, and kind of following with Nancy's question, you know, how do they feel about how the situation is being handled at this level and then outside of this level?
I've actually had an opportunity to speak to almost every faculty. I probably had one more faculty to speak to. And what I have done at all these faculty meetings is basically lay out for our faculty and staff exactly what the financial situation is regarding the state and its impact on us. I would be fair to say, and the principals can feel free to chime in, I think we've been effective in letting them know that, to a great degree, the decision was out of our hands, that it's an issue that we have to deal with. And I think the fact that we gave them a very clear picture of what was happening and what we were trying to do and what we had done even before this, I think to a degree was comforting to faculty. And also, too, I think we've been supportive of those individuals who were holding contracts on not only the second round of, the second round of polls, but also the first. So I think they understand the issue is more with Concord than it is with us. And in that sense, I wouldn't be surprised if many members of the faculty were working actively to see if, in fact, there would be some changes up in Concord regarding funding. But I think it's a fair assessment that I think they know what the position the district is in and what we're trying to do, and that the business with retirement and the loss of revenue is not something that we elected to do, but it's something that we're working with, and we're basically all in the boat together. I think that's pretty much the way it is. That's my assessment anyways.
Just for Nancy's reference, we're part of the lawsuit on the 28A issue concerning this that came up two years ago.
28A is unfunded mandates.
So we are part of that lawsuit that's why these went to the court system, saying that the reduction from 30 to 25 to 20 was unconstitutional also.
So that's unfortunately where we are and along with everybody else.
I mean, to that point, it's just a shell game.
Yes.
Because we held them accountable on school funding, and the court ordered that they must fund that. So since they couldn't play games with that money, they just found another area to do it to.
Well, and then they changed the constitution.
You said they made it mandatory that we join this. Is there any way to opt out?
No.
Because there's been a number of members in the community that have said, you know, opt out and just do your own retirement and, you know, and then you don't have to deal with this, so.
No.
It has to do with the state guaranteeing that they get their retirement, and we can't play games with them.
So the state can play games with them?
Yeah, so we can't start our own.
No, that's a replacement.
The state is guaranteeing that somebody other than the state will provide them with a retirement.
Right, and, you know, what you have to also keep in mind, too, is part of it, not for the school employees, but for fire, police, they don't, their earnings don't qualify for social security either because, if I remember correctly, goes right into, that's their only retirement. There is not social security, they don't contribute to social security because of their participation in the retirement system, as I understand.
I think it's funded at 65 percent of the total amount they need at the moment. Remember that conference?
Yeah. But Steve is absolutely correct. You look at, I mean, just to give you an example, catastrophic aid, which was reimbursable after three and a half times average per pupil cost, about 80 percent. Under the governor's proposal, it's 10 times average per pupil cost, which means we have one student that will be eligible. So we go from, and we had only budgeted at 60 percent too. I mean, so our catastrophic aid return under that proposal would be about $57,000. And if they fully funded cat aid, it would be at 30 million. It was at 22. Under this proposal, it's down to 8.
And that money has to be diverted from some area other than the special ed programs, services that we'd be required to provide to students involved?
I don't follow you, John.
Okay. If we're not getting catastrophic aid from the state, which was offsetting our cost of educating special, providing special services for a group of students, we're still required to provide the same level of services, and the money comes from general ed or somewhere else.
Right. What happens is that cat aid comes in on the revenue side. So what it does is offset the local tax dollars that you have. And what you have to also understand about catastrophic aid, it comes a year after you spent the money. All right? So what it does simply is reduce your revenue to its cease point. What I think you're looking at is they were held accountable for what was constitutionally required, which is the adequacy, whether you form it.
Is it adequate or not?
Right, it's questionable, to say the least. So those non-constitutionally quote-unquote guaranteed aids are the ones that you're going to see dry up. Building aid at 40 percent, catastrophic aid, which is shrinking incredibly.
Drivers up.
Drivers aid. I heard some discussion about reduction or elimination of old tuition and transportation money, dropout money, so all these things are in the mix. And then the one other thing that you should be aware of is the House believes the governor's revenues were $300 million too high. So they're looking at funding plans minus $300, $300 million in what the governor expected for revenue. So how, it's like the pea game, you know?
Or three-card mottie.
Three-card mottie, yeah.
So you just can never find that card. It just never shows up. So it's going to be interesting to see how, in fact, this thing plays out and how much money is going to be put in and where that money is going to be put in and how it's going to eventually affect us for the upcoming fiscal year.
So they are simultaneously trying to make up the amount of money that they're now required to spend for adequacy by taking it out of somewhere else and at the same time trying to get rid of their adequacy obligations?
Yes, that's.
Okay. Becky, this impacts you as directly as any of us. Any questions, concerns, anything you're hearing from the student body that you'd like to bring up? Can you pass her your microphone, Nancy?
I haven't heard any comments from the student body about all these different legislative things and the budget changes as much, but I have heard just like some concern that people were talking about how people were, or how different administrators, or not administrators, but faculty were losing their jobs, and they're just concerned about kind of like how that would impact them on a daily basis and everything. But so I've been hearing just very, a couple people with concerns, but I don't have any questions right now.
Is information reaching the students? All the administrators are here. Is this information that you're conveying to the students in some way?
Be careful when you start going down that pathway. You may have taken a political stand.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You can't take that political stance.
Okay.
So you step back from it, people are aware of it, the residents were allowed to talk to the public about it. And where we are here, you can't use the students to transport information or in a political nature.
Sure, I wasn't meaning that as much as if students are having questions about it, are they able to get their, are they able to get answers?
Well, part of what you have to understand is you have a lot of stuff that's in flux at this point. And to give you an example, at the high school, we're really still in the process of scheduling classes and trying to work things out. What will be transpiring over the next several months will be administrators developing options one, two, three, perhaps four, depending on how things lay out. And what we will or will not be able to offer based on a potential additional 1 point, roughly $1.4 million reduction, we just don't know at this point. So that's the issue. So we're still trying to develop alternatives, one, two, three, four, really is what it's going to come down to as we move through the process.
Anything else from anyone regarding the state of the state? Okay, let me break out of deliberations for one second. We don't have on the schedule liaison reports, but I also noticed that Becky has a bunch of notes in front of her. Would you like to tell us what's going on?
Sure. A short report today. March has been a pretty slow month, but on Thursday, March 24th, the Londonderry High School Student Council will be hosting a film festival. The festival is intended to be a way for students interested in video production to have their work shown to the public. The show is open to all students and the public in the town. Tickets are $3 in advance and $5 at the door, and every ticket comes with a free popcorn.
It's good incentive.
The LHS marching band, Calligard, leaves tomorrow for the New York City St. Patrick's Day Parade. After a day of traveling, the band will see The Lion King on Broadway. The band will perform the parade on Thursday morning. For those viewing at home, the parade will be, parade coverage can be found online at NBCNewYork.com and NYCStPatrick'sParade.org. The Londonderry marching band will also perform in Manchester St. Patrick's Day Parade on Sunday, March 27th. The five concert bands will be performing along with the eighth grade band in the Banderama Concert on Wednesday, March 30th. And in the last few weeks, many of the LHS sports teams have made it to the state championships, including varsity hockey, varsity boys and girls basketball, and gymnastics. All athletes in the school are reminded that the paperwork for spring sports is due no later than this month.
Our normal, it's okay, we already have your resignation, George. Our normal teacher representatives aren't here. Is there anything any of the administration would like to pass on regarding activities in the school, drama productions, things such as that? Okay.
Those seats are taken.
All right, moving back into deliberations, we have policy updates per the truancy law. This is third reading for adoption or amendment of JED, student absences and excuses, elementary school attendance, middle school attendance, and, you guessed it, high school attendance. Andy?
In the packets you have for the third reading policy JED, also regulations JEDR for the elementary, middle school, and high school, as well as the exhibit for a planned absence due to an extended vacation. This is the third reading. This policy has been vetted by our attorneys. It's been shared with Chief Hart. All the administrators have reviewed it. It's been posted online during the three-reading process, and there has been no negative feedback. It has not changed its form since the second reading. And at this point, I would answer any questions submitted to the board.
Floor is open for discussion, anybody?
Do you have a motion for us?
No questions, no comments. Oh, Steve?
Just procedurally, I noticed the form that people have to fill out when they take three days off of school for vacations. JED-E isn't part of our approval process. Does that need to be? We're approving JED and R for elementary, middle, high.
Yes, because that's an exception. That's just the form.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. I make a motion that we approve JED, student absences and excuses, JEDR for elementary, middle, and high school.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Ron. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, voters five, nothing. JED and its kin are adopted. Thanks very much.
Mr. Chair, I have two announcements to make. One, a reminder, we have a magnificent production of Alice in Wonderland at the middle school this weekend, and if people would like an entertaining time, please feel free to go over to the middle school. Mrs. Achilles, Alex. There you go. And also to just, I note, we will have, a number of our Special Olympics basketball teams will be participating in the state championships on April 1st and April 2nd. So, and the kids had, were at the regionals this Sunday at Salem High School, and it all did very well.
That's terrific. All right, anything else? Any last comments or questions or anything from anybody?
Make a motion to go into non-public session under RC 918, 13, Section 2A through F.
Second.
Okay, motion is by Steve, second is by Ron. This is a roll call vote, so we typically say aye and our names. All those in favor, please say aye.